And young people have already preregistered throughout the state of California. And after this assembly, it's anticipated that number will go up.
It's inspiring to students that may come from Hispanic backgrounds to see, you know, a Hispanic leader that has done well. And I think that that is important to events like this.
The changes to how we vote in 2020 are substantial. And I'll have more on that with L.A. City Clerk Holly Walcott later in the program. The L.A. Public Library offers a reward for scribes. L.A. Sanitation Department is collecting blanket donations. And Councilmember Mike Bonin wants rent control on the November ballot. All this next on City Beat.
The rising price of rents is an ongoing concern for tenants throughout Los Angeles. Councilmember Mike Bonin was among the supporters of a ballot measure that will allow an expansion of rent control.
The initiative to give cities more ability to do rent control has qualified for the November ballot and to try to start spreading the word to voters around the state that this is something that we need.
Fifty years ago, the sculpture called "Well of the Scribes" disappeared from the Los Angeles Central Library. Today, there's a reward up to $10,000 offered to anyone with information leading to the recovery of sections of the lost artifact. The weather in L.A. has been on the cold side. And in an effort to help the city's unsheltered residents, the L.A. Sanitation and Environment Department is collecting new and gently-used blankets and sleeping bags to help people stay warm. For information, contact the City Facilities Recycling Program at san.cfrp@lacity.org.
Style and performance. That was on display from these movie stars in the Oscar-nominated film Ford v Ferrari. No, we're not talking about the actors. We're talking about the cars.
Go Like Hell came out in 2009 originally. And for all of these years and now with the movie, it's just, it's a celebration of the greatest sporting rivalry in history. And it brings all the passionate people together to celebrate both sides, Ford and Ferrari. There's a lot more Ford here than Ferrari. But it's just terrific because there's so much passion for these brands. And there's so much passion for that story still after all these years.
You have million-dollar cars here. You have movie cars here. You have classic cars here. You don't see these cars on the street. And for cars and car enthusiasts, it gives them a chance and an opportunity to see cars that people in, say, Nebraska wouldn't be able to see. You know, we're fortunate that the Peterson Museum has this event here. And we're local that we can actually see these cars.
The fascination, I guess, is the history behind it, right? Of where Carroll Shelby started, right? Is normal person like you and I, like everybody else, that made a name for himself, right? And the significance of building something for themselves, right? And so it's the heritage that makes this really important.
Yeah, my father was in the movie Ford versus Ferrari portrayed, his name was Ken Miles, portrayed by Christian Bale. And so it's just a story basically of the development of the short Cobras and Ford GTs. And the friendship, more, it's more about a friendship between my father and Shelby.
The Shelby legacy is incredible. It's amazing, you know, he launched this Cobra, I don't know how, you know, in 1962. All of these years, you go around all over the country, all over the world. People are just so insanely passionate for Shelby cars, for the Shelby logo. After all these years, people just love these Mustangs and they'll love these Cobras.
We go from the Speedway to the Runway, where the competition in design excellence is fierce. The Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising has launched its annual Art of Motion Picture Costume Design Exhibit. Check out these amazing costumes.
We are here at the 28th Annual Art of Motion Picture Costume Design Exhibition. And we, this is a costume tribute fabulousness right here. We've got over 100 costumes from 30 different films, including the five that are nominated for Best Costume Design for the Oscars. We're so excited to have all five here. Just to the last minute, last week, we got a tie. That was from Mr. Rogers. His widow sent it to us to put on display with our one Mr. Rogers costume. Of course, this museum is great for anybody who likes movies. You know, so if you're a fan of the movies, you're a fan of Hollywood, and you want to come here and you can get a little bit closer to those favorite actors of yours or that movie that you really like. But we're here at a university. FIDM is a college. And of course, instructors can bring their students here. That is the beauty of it. How amazing is that those students can come here and look up close to Academy Award-nominated costumes as well as other costumes, actual costumes. I mean, that's a once-in-a-lifetime experience. They can just come here, come here, sketch, take pictures, take instant stories, do whatever you want to do, but don't touch them. And the best part, are you waiting? It's free! That's the best part. It's open to the public and it's free. And we love that. So don't miss it.
Were you able to spot your favorite movie costume? I'm rooting for the one with the red feathers. Mayor Eric Garcetti joined LAPD Chief Michael Moore and hundreds of happy Angelenos for a Chinatown tradition, the 121st Golden Dragon Parade.
Here at the annual Chinese New Year Parade, and we are having a great time. Gonghe Pachoy, and may it be a year of goodness and prosperity and health and peace for all.
It's a great opportunity to really see the community, all of Los Angeles, come out and celebrate the Chinese culture, the history, and the inclusion here in not just Los Angeles, but America. Proud day. It's great to be here.
I see you a dollar in your hand. What does that mean?
I'm supposed to give to the lions, supposed to give them good luck for the New Year.
And for Los Angeles to be out here celebrating one of the best traditions anywhere in Los Angeles. And it's important after this week especially, and everything that happened with Kobe, for us to be out here and to say we are strong, we are standing tall, and we're going to continue his legacy.
I don't know if I would feed the dragon, but is it still good luck if you just hand the dragon a dollar? I'll get back to you on that one. Cultural and community pride flooded into the streets of Lamert Park during their monthly art walk. The street fair is how this neighborhood celebrates African-American heritage year round.
The art walk benefits the community because it gives us a platform to showcase our art. Also, it gives us something like positive, constructive, and something to be proud about.
I think the art walk is very inspirational, and it brings not only their community together, but us as well.
It educates them on African culture. It also preserves the history of African Americans contributing to this community. It also is a place where we can gather, where we can dance, where we can sing, where we can be African-American.
We've always been a really diverse community. It's been a stronghold for the African-American community for over 30 years. The drum circle happens. And music has always been a good way to bring different communities and different ethnicities together.
I did not have shoes. When I left, I just left. I left everything. So they're giving me back. They give me back things I don't have. It makes you feel warm inside. I'm a person loves to give. Even if somebody needs what I have in my bag, I will give it away because they need it more than I need it. I'm still going to survive.
The world is filled with a lot of hate that we don't need. And so just embodying love is the most important thing that we can do right now.
We just believe that where policy and politics fall short, that there are human solutions. And those solutions are rooted in love and friendship. And it sounds utopian, but it's not. It's very simple. At the end of the day, it's about seeing people for who they are and seeing and recognizing every single person's potential, and that everybody has a place in our society and that nobody should be forgotten or left out.
Our feature this week is all about the 2020 ballot changes. Changes that were made in an effort to make voting easier and more accessible for all voters. I had the privilege of sitting down with Los Angeles City Clerk Holly Walcott to get a firsthand tutorial. It was really informative stuff. Take a look. The March 2020 primary marks the beginning of some big changes in the voting process in Los Angeles. Not only will there be different polling places for many Angelenos, but the ballots will also be marked in a brand-new way using the latest technology. Our polling places are about to change, the locations where we cast our ballots. So tell us what we're in for.
The previous precinct model is going away. We will now have what is called voting centers. The idea is that you can go to any one of those vote centers. So instead of just the precinct closest to your house, you can go to any voting center that's most convenient to you, whether it's near your home, near your work, near a park. Each location will be open for up to 11 days before the actual primary. Look it up online at lavote.net. They do have a vote center locator that's already live. And you can find the vote center that's most convenient for you to vote at.
Now, how does this new system address the needs of those with disabilities?
The idea was to go into different communities and take care of everybody's needs, to be as inclusive as possible. So the wheelchair accessible, making sure that the size and shape of the ballot marking device would accommodate wheelchairs for the hearing or the sight impaired, that they can plug in and use just the same system as everybody else to vote. And the same thing with the language. If you want to pick one of the 12 different languages, you just pick that language on the screen. This is the county's new ballot marking device that will be in use for the March primary. And it says, "Touch the circle to start." Now it asks us to insert our ballot. Now it says that the ballot has been loaded. Now it gives us a chance to vote for one. And it tells us that this is for the city local mayor. So it gives us these four choices, or we can hit more. And there are some other choices. So we are going to hit this one. And next. Now it's going to allow us to review. Hit next. And it says, "Yes, I'm ready to print." Gives you the opportunity to go back one more time and check that each one of these races was what you wanted. After you've checked, make sure your choices are correct. Then you feed it back into the system.
Okay. I'll let you do that.
And your ballot has been cast.
That simple. Take in a concert at Union Station, attend a free ladies' book swap, and Mardi Gras at the beach. All this in Things to Do.
Metro Art Los Angeles invites you to the first official rush hour concert of the year. Be there for a live performance by The Sincere's in the Union Station's waiting room. The Sincere's play a blend of 1960s soul and R&B cultivated in their hometown of East Los Angeles. Don't miss Metro Art Presents: The Sincere's, Thursday, February 13th, beginning at 4:00 p.m. For details, visit unionstationla.com. Join Asha Grant, Director of the Free Black Women's Library, for free book swap and art workshop. Spend an afternoon of literature and art centered on the exploration of radical feminism and reclamation of the black female body. It's an event for all ages and capabilities. The Free Black Women's Library Book Swap and Art Workshop happens Saturday, February 15th. Register for this free event on Eventbrite. Hello, party peeps. It's time for the 19th Annual Venice Beach Mardi Gras Parade. Ready to get your crazy on? Great, because it's Mardi Gras time. So put on something zany and mosey the whole family down to Venice Beach. Enjoy the parade and stay for the party afterwards. The 19th Annual Venice Beach Mardi Gras Parade starts at Beach at Rose Avenues. The fun happens Saturday, February 15th, beginning at 12 noon. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Saeda Pagan. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube.
Good morning, citizens. Please call the members off. We have a council meeting. We have a call. 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 We have a call.[606.82][606.82][S01. We have a call.[608.82][608.82][S01. We have a call.[610.82][610.82][S01. We have a call.[612.82][612.82][S01. We have a call.[614.82][614.82][S01. We have a call.[616.82][616.82][S01. We have a call.[618.82][618.82][S01. We have a call.[620.82][620.82][S01. We have a call.[622.82][622.82][S01. We have a call.[624.82][624.82][S01. We have a call.[626.82][626.82][S01. We have a call.[628.82][628.82][S01. We have a call.[630.82][630.82][S01. We have a call.[632.82][632.82][S01. We have a call.[634.82][634.82][S01. We have a call.[636.82][636.82][S01. We have a call.[638.82][638.82][S01. We have a call.[640.82][640.82][S01. We have a call.[642.82][642.82][S01. We have a call.[644.82][644.82][S01. We have a call.[646.82][646.82][S01. We have a call.[648.82][648.82][S01. We have a call.[650.82][650.82][S01. We have a call.[652.82][652.82][S01. We have a call.[654.82][654.82][S01. We have a call.[656.82][656.82][S01. We have a call.[658.82][658.82][S01. We have a call.[660.82][660.82][S01. We have a call.[662.82][662.82][S01. We have a call.[664.82][664.82][S01. We have a call.[666.82][666.82][S01. We have a call.[668.82][668.82][S01. We have a call.[670.82][670.82][S01. We have a call.[672.82][672.82][S01. We have a call.[674.82][674.82][S01. We have a call.[676.82][676.82][S01. We have a call.[678.82][678.82][S01. We have a call.[680.82][680.82][S01. We have a call.[682.82][682.82][S01. We have a call.[684.82][684.82][S01. We have a call.[686.82][686.82][S01. We have a call.[688.82][688.82][S01. We have a call.[690.82][690.82][S01. We have a call.[692.82][692.82][S01. We have a call.[694.82][694.82][S01. We have a call.[696.82][696.82][S01. We have a call.[698.82][698.82][S01. We have a call.[700.82][700.82][S01. We have a call.[702.82][702.82][S01. We have a call.[704.82][704.82][S01. We have a call.[706.82][706.82][S01. We have a call.[708.82][708.82][S01. We have a call.[710.82][710.82][S01. We have a call.[712.82][712.82][S01. We have a call.[714.82][714.82][S01. We have a call.[716.82][716.82][S01. We have a call.[718.82][718.82][S01. We have a call.[720.82][720.82][S01. We have a call.[722.82][722.82][S01. We have a call.[724.82][724.82][S01. We have a call.[726.82][726.82][S01. We have a call.[728.82][728.82][S01. We have a call.[730.82][730.82][S01. We have a call.[732.82][732.82][S01. We have a call.[734.82][734.82][S01. We have a call.[736.82][736.82][S01. We have a call.[738.82][738.82][S01. We have a call.[740.82][740.82][S01. We have a call.[742.82][742.82][S01. We have a call.[744.82][744.82][S01. We have a call.[746.82][746.82][S01. We have a call.[748.82][748.82][S01. We have a call.[750.82][750.82][S01. We have a call.[752.82][752.82][S01. We have a call.[754.82][754.82][S01. We have a call.[756.82][756.82][S01. We have a call.[758.82][758.82][S01. We have a call.[760.82][760.82][S01. We have a call.[762.82][762.82][S01. We have a call.[764.82][764.82][S01. We have a call.[766.82][766.82][S01. We have a call.[768.82][768.82][S01. We have a call.[770.82][770.82][S01. We have a call.[772.82][772.82][S01. We have a call.[774.82][774.82][S01. We have a call.[776.82][776.82][S01. We have a call.[778.82][778.82][S01. We have a call.[780.82][780.82][S01. We have a call.[782.82][782.82][S01. We have a call.[784.82][784.82][S01. We have a call.[786.82][786.82][S01. We have a call.[788.82][788.82][S01. We have a call.[790.82][790.82][S01. We have a call.[792.82][792.82][S01. We have a call.[794.82][794.82][S01. We have a call.[796.82][796.82][S01. We have a call.[798.82][798.82][S01. We have a call.[800.82][800.82][S01. We have a call.[802.82][802.82][S01. We have a call.[804.82][804.82][S01. We have a call.[806.82][806.82][S01. We have a call.[808.82][808.82][S01. We have a call.[810.82][810.82][S01. We have a call.[812.82][812.82][S01. We have a call.[814.82][814.82][S01. We have a call.[816.82][816.82][S01. We have a call.[818.82][818.82][S01. We have a call.[820.82][820.82][S01. We have a call.[822.82][822.82][S01. We have a call.[824.82][824.82][S01. We have a call.[826.82][826.82][S01. We have a call.[828.82][828.82][S01. We have a call.[830.82][830.82][S01. We have a call.[832.82][832.82][S01. We have a call.[834.82][834.82][S01. We have a call.[836.82][836.82][S01. We have a call.[838.82][838.82][S01. We have a call.[840.82][840.82][S01. We have a call.[842.82][842.82][S01. We have a call.[844.82][844.82][S01. We have a call.[846.82][846.82][S01. We have a call.[848.82][848.82][S01. We have a call.[850.82][850.82][S01. We have a call.[852.82][852.82][S01. We have a call.[854.82][854.82][S01. We have a call.[856.82][856.82][S01. We have a call.[858.82][858.82][S01. We have a call.[860.82][860.82][S01. We have a call.[862.82][862.82][S01. We have a call.[864.82][864.82][S01. We have a call.[866.82][866.82][S01. We have a call.[868.82][868.82][S01. We have a call.[870.82][870.82][S01. We have a call.[872.82][872.82][S01. We have a call.[874.82][874.82][S01. We have a call.[876.82][876.82][S01. We have a call.[878.82][878.82][S01. We have a call.[880.82][880.82][S01. We have a call.[882.82][882.82][S01. We have a call.[884.82][884.82][S01. We have a call.[886.82][886.82][S01. We have a call.[888.82][888.82][S01. We have a call.[890.82][890.82][S01. We have a call.[892.82][892.82][S01. We have a call.[894.82][894.82][S01. We have a call.[896.82][896.82][S01. We have a call.[898.82][898.82][S01. We have a call.[900.82][900.82][S01. We have a call.[902.82][902.82][S01. We have a call.[904.82][904.82][S01. We have a call.[906.82][906.82][S01. We have a call.[908.82][908.82][S01. We have a call.[910.82][910.82][S01. We have a call.[912.82][912.82][S01. We have a call.[914.82][914.82][S01. We have a call.[916.82][916.82][S01. We have a call.[918.82][918.82][S01. We have a call.[920.82][920.82][S01. We have a call.[922.82][922.82][S01. We have a call.[924.82][924.82][S01. We have a call.[926.82][926.82][S01. We have a call.[928.82][928.82][S01. We have a call.[930.82][930.82][S01. We have a call.[932.82][932.82][S01. We have a call.[934.82][934.82][S01. We have a call.[936.82][936.82][S01. We have a call.[938.82][938.82][S01. We have a call.[940.82][940.82][S01. We have a call.[942.82][942.82][S01. We have a call. We have a call.[946.82][946.82][S01. We have a call.[948.82][948.82][S01. We have a call.[950.82][950.82][S01. We have a call.[952.82][952.82][S01. We have a call.[954.82][954.82][S01. We have a call.[956.82][956.82][S01. We have a call.[958.82][958.82][S01. We have a call.[960.82][960.82][S01. We have a call.[962.82][962.82][S01. We have a call.[964.82][964.82][S01. We have a call.[966.82][966.82][S01. We have a call.[968.82][968.82][S01. We have a call.[970.82][970.82][S01. We have a call.[972.82][972.82][S01. We have a call.[974.82][974.82][S01. We have a call.[976.82][976.82][S01. We have a call.[978.82][978.82][S01. We have a call.[980.82][980.82][S01. We have a call.[982.82][982.82][S01. We have a call.[984.82][984.82][S01. We have a call.[986.82][986.82][S01. We have a call.[988.82][988.82][S01. We have a call.[990.82][990.82][S01. We have a call.[992.82][992.82][S01. We have a call.[994.82][994.82][S01. We have a call.[996.82][996.82][S01. We have a call.[998.82][998.82][S01. We have a call.[1000.82][1000.82][S01. We have a call.[1002.82][1002.82][S01. We have a call.[1004.82][1004.82][S01. We have a call.[1006.82][1006.82][S01. We have a call.[1008.82][1008.82][S01. We have a call.[1010.82][1010.82][S01. We have a call.[1012.82][1012.82][S01. We have a call.[1014.82][1014.82][S01. We have a call.[1016.82][1016.82][S01. We have a call.[1018.82][1018.82][S01. We have a call.[1020.82][1020.82][S01. We have a call.[1022.82][1022.82][S01. We have a call.[1024.82][1024.82][S01. We have a call.[1026.82][1026.82][S01. We have a call.[1028.82][1028.82][S01. We have a call.[1030.82][1030.82][S01. We have a call.[1032.82][1032.82][S01. We have a call.[1034.82][1034.82][S01. We have a call.[1036.82][1036.82][S01. We have a call.[1038.82][1038.82][S01. We have a call.[1040.82][1040.82][S01. We have a call.[1042.82][1042.82][S01. We have a call.[1044.82][1044.82][S01. We have a call.[1046.82][1046.82][S01. We have a call.[1048.82][1048.82][S01. We have a call.[1050.82][1050.82][S01. We have a call.[1052.82][1052.82][S01. We have a call.[1054.82][1054.82][S01. We have a call.[1056.82][1056.82][S01. We have a call.[1058.82][1058.82][S01. We have a call.[1060.82][1060.82][S01. We have a call.[1062.82][1062.82][S01. We have a call.[1064.82][1064.82][S01. We have a call.[1066.82][1066.82][S01. We have a call.[1068.82][1068.82][S01. We have a call.[1070.82][1070.82][S01. We have a call.[1072.82][1072.82][S01. We have a call.[1074.82][1074.82][S01. We have a call.[1076.82][1076.82][S01. We have a call.[1078.82][1078.82][S01. We have a call.[1080.82][1080.82][S01. We have a call.[1082.82][1082.82][S01. We have a call.[1084.82][1084.82][S01. We have a call.[1086.82][1086.82][S01. We have a call.[1088.82][1088.82][S01. We have a call.[1090.82][1090.82][S01. We have a call.[1092.82][1092.82][S01. We have a call.[1094.82][1094.82][S01. We have a call.[1096.82][1096.82][S01. We have a call.[1098.82][1098.82][S01. We have a call.[1100.82][1100.82][S01. We have a call.[1102.82][1102.82][S01. We have a call.[1104.82][1104.82][S01. We have a call.[1106.82][1106.82][S01. We have a call.[1108.82][1108.82][S01. We have a call.[1110.82][1110.82][S01. We have a call.[1112.82][1112.82][S01. We have a call.[1114.82][1114.82][S01. We have a call.[1116.82][1116.82][S01. We have a call.[1118.82][1118.82][S01. We have a call.[1120.82][1120.82][S01. We have a call.[1122.82][1122.82][S01. We have a call.[1124.82][1124.82][S01. We have a call.[1126.82][1126.82][S01. We have a call.[1128.82][1128.82][S01. We have a call.[1130.82][1130.82][S01. We have a call.[1132.82][1132.82][S01. We have a call.[1134.82][1134.82][S01. We have a call.[1136.82][1136.82][S01. We have a call.[1138.82][1138.82][S01. We have a call.[1140.82][1140.82][S01. We have a call.[1142.82][1142.82][S01. We have a call.[1144.82][1144.82][S01. We have a call.[1146.82][1146.82][S01. We have a call.[1148.82][1148.82][S01. We have a call.[1150.82][1150.82][S01. We have a call.[1152.82][1152.82][S01. We have a call.[1154.82][1154.82][S01. We have a call.[1156.82][1156.82][S01. We have a call.[1158.82][1158.82][S01. We have a call.[1160.82][1160.82][S01. We have a call.[1162.82][1162.82][S01. We have a call.[1164.82][1164.82][S01. We have a call.[1166.82][1166.82][S01. We have a call.[1168.82][1168.82][S01. We have a call.[1170.82][1170.82][S01. We have a call.[1172.82][1172.82][S01. We have a call.[1174.82][1174.82][S01. We have a call.[1176.82][1176.82][S01. We have a call.[1178.82][1178.82][S01. We have a call.[1180.82][1180.82][S01. We have a call.[1182.82][1182.82][S01. We have a call.[1184.82][1184.82][S01. We have a call.[1186.82][1186.82][S01. We have a call.[1188.82][1188.82][S01. We have a call.[1190.82][1190.82][S01. We have a call.[1192.82][1192.82][S01. We have a call.[1194.82][1194.82][S01. We have a call.[1196.82][1196.82][S01. We have a call.[1198.82][1198.82][S01. We have a call.[1200.82][1200.82][S01. We have a call.[1202.82][1202.82][S01. We have a call.[1204.82][1204.82][S01. We have a call.[1206.82][1206.82][S01. We have a call.[1208.82][1208.82][S01. We have a call.[1210.82][1210.82][S01. We have a call.[1212.82][1212.82][S01. We have a call.[1214.82][1214.82][S01. We have a call.[1216.82][1216.82][S01. We have a call.[1218.82][1218.82][S01. We have a call.[1220.82][1220.82][S01. We have a call.[1222.82][1222.82][S01. We have a call.[1224.82][1224.82][S01. We have a call.[1226.82][1226.82][S01. We have a call.[1228.82][1228.82][S01. We have a call.[1230.82][1230.82][S01. We have a call.[1232.82][1232.82][S01. We have a call.[1234.82][1234.82][S01. We have a call.[1236.82][1236.82][S01. We have a call.[1238.82][1238.82][S01. We have a call.[1240.82][1240.82][S01. We have a call.[1242.82][1242.82][S01. We have a call.[1244.82][1244.82][S01. We have a call.[1246.82][1246.82][S01. We have a call.[1248.82][1248.82][S01. We have a call.[1250.82][1250.82][S01. We have a call.[1252.82][1252.82][S01. We have a call.[1254.82][1254.82][S01. We have a call.[1256.82][1256.82][S01. We have a call.[1258.82][1258.82][S01. We have a call.[1260.82][1260.82][S01. We have a call.[1262.82][1262.82][S01. We have a call.[1264.82][1264.82][S01. We have a call.[1266.82][1266.82][S01. We have a call.[1268.82][1268.82][S01. We have a call.[1270.82][1270.82][S01. We have a call.[1272.82][1272.82][S01. We have a call.[1274.82][1274.82][S01. We have a call.[1276.82][1276.82][S01. We have a call.[1278.82][1278.82][S01. We have a call.[1280.82][1280.82][S01. We have a call.[1282.82][1282.82][S01. We have a call.[1284.82][1284.82][S01. We have a call.[1286.82][1286.82][S01. We have a call.[1288.82][1288.82][S01. We have a call.[1290.82][1290.82][S01. We have a call.[1292.82][1292.82][S01. We have a call.[1294.82][1294.82][S01. We have a call.[1296.82][1296.82][S01. We have a call.[1298.82][1298.82][S01. We have a call.[1300.82][1300.82][S01. We have a call.[1302.82][1302.82][S01. We have a call.[1304.82][1304.82][S01. We have a call.[1306.82][1306.82][S01. We have a call.[1308.82][1308.82][S01. We have a call.[1310.82][1310.82][S01. We have a call.[1312.82][1312.82][S01. We have a call.[1314.82][1314.82][S01. We have a call.[1316.82][1316.82][S01. We have a call.[1318.82][1318.82][S01. We have a call.[1320.82][1320.82][S01. We have a call.[1322.82][1322.82][S01. We have a call.[1324.82][1324.82][S01. We have a call.[1326.82][1326.82][S01. We have a call.[1328.82][1328.82][S01. We have a call.[1330.82][1330.82][S01. We have a call.[1332.82][1332.82][S01. We have a call.[1334.82][1334.82][S01. We have a call.[1336.82][1336.82][S01. We have a call.[1338.82][1338.82][S01. We have a call.[1340.82][1340.82][S01. We have a call.[1342.82][1342.82][S01. We have a call.[1344.82][1344.82][S01. We have a call.[1346.82][1346.82][S01. We have a call.[1348.82][1348.82][S01. We have a call.[1350.82][1350.82][S01. We have a call.[1352.82][1352.82][S01. We have a call.[1354.82][1354.82][S01. We have a call.[1356.82][1356.82][S01. We have a call.[1358.82][1358.82][S01. We have a call.[1360.82][1360.82][S01. We have a call.[1362.82][1362.82][S01. We have a call.[1364.82][1364.82][S01. We have a call.[1366.82][1366.82][S01. We have a call.[1368.82][1368.82][S01. We have a call.[1370.82][1370.82][S01. We have a call.[1372.82][1372.82][S01. We have a call.[1374.82][1374.82][S01. We have a call.[1376.82][1376.82][S01. We have a call.[1378.82][1378.82][S01. We have a call.[1380.82][1380.82][S01. We have a call.[1382.82][1382.82][S01. We have a call.[1384.82][1384.82][S01. We have a call.[1386.82][1386.82][S01. We have a call.[1388.82][1388.82][S01. We have a call.[1390.82][1390.82][S01. We have a call.[1392.82][1392.82][S01. We have a call.[1394.82][1394.82][S01. We have a call.[1396.82][1396.82][S01. We have a call.[1398.82][1398.82][S01. We have a call.[1400.82][1400.82][S01. We have a call.[1402.82][1402.82][S01. We have a call.[1404.82][1404.82][S01. We have a call.[1406.82][1406.82][S01. We have a call.[1408.82][1408.82][S01. We have a call.[1410.82][1410.82][S01. We have a call.[1412.82][1412.82][S01. We have a call.[1414.82][1414.82][S01. We have a call. We have a call. We have a call. We have a call. We have a call.[1424.82][1424.82][S01. We have a call.[1426.82][1426.82][S01. We have a call.[1428.82][1428.82][S01. We have a call.[1430.82][1430.82][S01. We have a call.[1432.82][1432.82][S01. We have a call. 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 We have a call.[1456.82][1456.82][S01. We have a call.[1458.82][1458.82][S01. We have a call.[1460.82][1460.82][S01. We have a call.[1462.82][1462.82][S01. We have a call.[1464.82][1464.82][S01. We have a call.[1466.82][1466.82][S01. We have a call.[1468.82][1468.82][S01. We have a call.[1470.82][1470.82][S01. We have a call.[1472.82][1472.82][S01. We have a call.[1474.82][1474.82][S01. We have a call.[1476.82][1476.82][S01. We have a call.[1478.82][1478.82][S01. We have a call.[1480.82][1480.82][S01. We have a call.[1482.82][1482.82][S01. We have a call.[1484.82][1484.82][S01. We have a call.[1486.82][1486.82][S01. We have a call.[1488.82][1488.82][S01. We have a call.[1490.82][1490.82][S01. We have a call.[1492.82][1492.82][S01. We have a call.[1494.82][1494.82][S01. We have a call.[1496.82][1496.82][S01. We have a call.[1498.82][1498.82][S01. We have a call.[1500.82][1500.82][S01. We have a call.[1502.82][1502.82][S01. We have a call.[1504.82][1504.82][S01. We have a call.[1506.82][1506.82][S01. We have a call.[1508.82][1508.82][S01. We have a call.[1510.82][1510.82][S01. We have a call.[1512.82][1512.82][S01. We have a call.[1514.82][1514.82][S01. We have a call.[1516.82][1516.82][S01. We have a call.[1518.82][1518.82][S01. We have a call.[1520.82][1520.82][S01. We have a call.[1522.82][1522.82][S01. We have a call.[1524.82][1524.82][S01. We have a call.[1526.82][1526.82][S01. We have a call.[1528.82][1528.82][S01. We have a call.[1530.82][1530.82][S01. We have a call.[1532.82][1532.82][S01. We have a call.[1534.82][1534.82][S01. We have a call.[1536.82][1536.82][S01. We have a call.[1538.82][1538.82][S01. We have a call.[1540.82][1540.82][S01. We have a call.[1542.82][1542.82][S01. We have a call.[1544.82][1544.82][S01. We have a call.[1546.82][1546.82][S01. We have a call.[1548.82][1548.82][S01. We have a call.[1550.82][1550.82][S01. We have a call.[1552.82][1552.82][S01. We have a call.[1554.82][1554.82][S01. We have a call.[1556.82][1556.82][S01. We have a call.[1558.82][1558.82][S01. We have a call.[1560.82][1560.82][S01. We have a call.[1562.82][1562.82][S01. We have a call.[1564.82][1564.82][S01. We have a call.[1566.82][1566.82][S01. We have a call.[1568.82][1568.82][S01. We have a call.[1570.82][1570.82][S01. We have a call.[1572.82][1572.82][S01. We have a call.[1574.82][1574.82][S01. We have a call.[1576.82][1576.82][S01. We have a call.[1578.82][1578.82][S01. We have a call.[1580.82][1580.82][S01. We have a call.[1582.82][1582.82][S01. We have a call.[1584.82][1584.82][S01. We have a call.[1586.82][1586.82][S01. We have a call.[1588.82][1588.82][S01. We have a call. 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 We have a call.[1602.82][1602.82][S01. We have a call.[1604.82][1604.82][S01. We have a call.[1606.82][1606.82][S01. We have a call.[1608.82][1608.82][S01. We have a call.[1610.82][1610.82][S01. We have a call.[1612.82][1612.82][S01. We have a call.[1614.82][1614.82][S01. We have a call.[1616.82][1616.82][S01. We have a call.[1618.82][1618.82][S01. We have a call.[1620.82][1620.82][S01. We have a call.[1622.82][1622.82][S01. We have a call.[1624.82][1624.82][S01. We have a call.[1626.82][1626.82][S01. We have a call.[1628.82][1628.82][S01. We have a call.[1630.82][1630.82][S01. We have a call.[1632.82][1632.82][S01. We have a call.[1634.82][1634.82][S01. We have a call.[1636.82][1636.82][S01. We have a call.[1638.82][1638.82][S01. We have a call.[1640.82][1640.82][S01. We have a call.[1642.82][1642.82][S01. We have a call.[1644.82][1644.82][S01. We have a call.[1646.82][1646.82][S01. We have a call.[1648.82][1648.82][S01. We have a call.[1650.82][1650.82][S01. We have a call.[1652.82][1652.82][S01. We have a call.[1654.82][1654.82][S01. We have a call.[1656.82][1656.82][S01. We have a call.[1658.82][1658.82][S01. We have a call.[1660.82][1660.82][S01. We have a call.[1662.82][1662.82][S01. We have a call.[1664.82][1664.82][S01. We have a call.[1666.82][1666.82][S01. We have a call.[1668.82][1668.82][S01. We have a call.[1670.82][1670.82][S01. We have a call.[1672.82][1672.82][S01. We have a call.[1674.82][1674.82][S01. We have a call.[1676.82][1676.82][S01. We have a call.[1678.82][1678.82][S01. We have a call.[1680.82][1680.82][S01. We have a call.[1682.82][1682.82][S01. We have a call.[1684.82][1684.82][S01. We have a call.[1686.82][1686.82][S01. We have a call.[1688.82][1688.82][S01. We have a call.[1690.82][1690.82][S01. We have a call.[1692.82][1692.82][S01. We have a call.[1694.82][1694.82][S01. We have a call.[1696.82][1696.82][S01. We have a call.[1698.82][1698.82][S01. We have a call.[1700.82][1700.82][S01. We have a call.[1702.82][1702.82][S01. We have a call.[1704.82][1704.82][S01. We have a call.[1706.82][1706.82][S01. We have a call.[1708.82][1708.82][S01. We have a call.[1710.82][1710.82][S01. We have a call.[1712.82][1712.82][S01. We have a call.[1714.82][1714.82][S01. We have a call.[1716.82][1716.82][S01. We have a call.[1718.82][1718.82][S01. We have a call.[1720.82][1720.82][S01. We have a call.[1722.82][1722.82][S01. We have a call.[1724.82][1724.82][S01. We have a call.[1726.82][1726.82][S01. We have a call.[1728.82][1728.82][S01. We have a call.[1730.82][1730.82][S01. We have a call.[1732.82][1732.82][S01. We have a call.[1734.82][1734.82][S01. We have a call.[1736.82][1736.82][S01. We have a call.[1738.82][1738.82][S01. We have a call.[1740.82] The President!
He got it. Oh, you got it. So let's vote on item number 23, Madam Clerk. Let's go ahead. Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. You're done. No, you're done. Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Let's vote on item number 23, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Let's move on to item number 26.
And for the record, that was adopted as amended.
Correct. Item 26, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, members, we're gonna move on to general public comment. If I hear, if you hear your name, please come forward to the podium. Harur Kazabian? Harut? Do you want to come on forward? Ashwar Kabar? Are you here? Mr. Kabar, you want to come forward? Yannis Mersha? Johannis Mersha, are you here? Mr. Kazabian, why don't we go ahead and start with you, sir? Come forward, you have one minute of general public comment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Harut Kazabian. I am a taxi driver for Yellow Cab since 2001. I am here on behalf of myself and all of my fellow taxi drivers concerning the new rules at LAX Airport, that we are not able to go inside the airport to pick up passengers. Since they started the new rule, we lost almost 50% of our income. Most of my passengers that I get in my cab, and I drive a minivan, they always complain of their hardship, being not able to get from terminal to a taxi right away to their destination. Especially the senior citizen people and handicapped people, always complaining that they have to pick up their...
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Everyone gets one minute, and your minute is up. Thank you. Next speaker? Good morning, you have one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Ashraf Akbar. I am a Yellow Cab driver. I'm driving since 1995. And we are working in this city with our, we are following rules and regulation. And we are always respect this city's rules and regulation, and the airport rules and regulation. So we are suffering nowadays from the airport kick out from the terminal. So we are suffering like more than 50% business. So you see all the drivers over here, if you don't put back to the terminal, sorry, cab driver, to pick up the customer, those drivers are going to be like homeless. This city has like close to 100,000 homeless already. And if you push back, those people make more homeless, then it is not justice. Nowadays, okay, nowadays, like Uber, Lyft, they don't have rules and regulations.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna ask you to wrap up your last sentence. Everyone gets the same time, one minute. Thank you. Mr. Mersha, hold on for just a second. I'm gonna call a couple of more speakers. Mikhail Sahakian? Maria Grubel? Maria? Is anybody here with that name? Go ahead, Mr. Mersha.
Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Johannis Mersha. I'm a cab driver. I'm driving for, as for LA Taxi, now for United, for almost 25 years. We are here to ask you guys, just, you know, fairness. We are not asking for special treatment. We are licensed to work in City of Los Angeles, but since the city council, the mayor, and, you know, allows, you know, the TNC companies to operate at the airport, we lost a lot of our business. Now, when we are kicked out from the airport, the rest of, you know, business that we had, we are losing, we are losing a lot of, you know, old timers, because they are not making money. Because TNC companies right now at the airport, they are working like a taxi. Customers, they don't have to reserve it. They are going, give a code, and taking customers like a taxi. There are no TNC no more. Please, when you regulate us, regulate them too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Mikhail Sahakian. I'm representing Bell Cab Company from LA Taxi Cab. I've been more than 10 years driving Taxi Cab. And I want you, I wanted to describe one situation that I never had before in these 10 years. When the passenger get to my taxi almost crying, so frustrated she was, because she has two little children and two big bags, and she doesn't have any option to get a taxi at the curb. She had to go through experience, all that shuttle, wait until the third shuttle come in, and she was able to get in, and got to the taxi lot, disembark, and get to the taxi, and have to do everything to make her day go back to the normal situation. And everybody was saying here that our income got 50% less in the last six months. I know, there's 2,000 drivers petition, we're just handing to Mayor Garcetti, but there is 6,000 family members of that drivers.
Thank you. Buenos dias. Buenos dias, necesito un intérprete un momentito. I'll interpret for her after. We have an interpreter. Do you want to move, sir? Do you want to go help interpret, please?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maria Grubel.
Good morning, my name is Maria Grubel.
Vengo representando mi área de Watts.
I am representing the area of Watts.
I have Watts y Berta.
I have Watts y Bertas.
También vengo representando, soy madre de crianza.
I am also representing, I am a mother that I am raising kids.
Nosotros en Los Ángeles nos mantenemos unidos. Es terrible saber...
We in Los Angeles keep together, and it's horrible to know.
Como la industria del tabaco se dirige específicamente a nuestras comunidades de color.
How the tobacco industry directs their attention to communities of our color?
Con estrategias de comercialización de tabaco.
With strategies of commercialization of tobacco?
La industria del tabaco sabe que el tabaco de sabor...
The tobacco industry knows that flavored tobacco?
Incluyendo mentol hace que sea más fácil comenzar...
Including menthol, it is easier to start and more easy to begin?
Y más difícil dejarlo.
And very difficult to quit?
Los sabores hacen el tabaco más mortal.
The flavors make tobacco more mortal?
No está bien de apuntar este producto a nuestras comunidades.
We cannot have this product in our community?
Ustedes pueden detener esto en la ciudad de Los Ángeles.
You can stop this in the city of Los Angeles?
Le apoyaremos en esto.
We will support you in this.
Le insisto para la venta de mentol y otros sabores de tabaco adictivo.
I urge you to stop the sale of another tobacco in flavor?
Mi preocupación como comunidad, como madre y representante de todos los padres de Watts.
My concern as a mother and a father of Watts?
Que si pueden ayudarnos.
That if you can help us.
A que termine esto.
To stop all this.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Next speaker, if you hear your name, please come up. Araradza Durian, are you here? Lucia Rodriguez? Lucia? Aras Ahagian? And Noah Wise, are you here? Mr. Wise? Good morning, sir, come on up.
Good morning, everyone. With all respect for the council members, I just want to remind you guys, since they kick us out from the airport, pick up from the curb, just because they asking for, there's a construction inside, there's no space, but they give us the same space as we pick up before, to the flyway, to the airport employees' bosses, to the LAX seat bosses. If there's no space, how come they give the same space to them? Second of all, please stop the discrimination. Look at these people. All, they pass the background check fingerprint federally, alcohol test, drug test, comply with the all-rule regulation of the city, and do transportation as a commercial business. How about the other parties? Did they pass it all we do? No. Do you have any information as a data, as you have from us, from them? Nothing. If you're gonna continue this, this industry is gonna destroy. And these people, they're gonna...
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good morning, ma'am.
Hola, buenos dias a todos. El motivo que estamos aquí es que queremos...
Un poquito más cercano al micrófono, no la podemos oír.
El motivo que estamos aquí estamos pidiendo su ayuda para regresar adentro del aeropuerto.
The reason we are here is because we're asking for your help to go back to inside the airport?
Ya que hemos sido afectados en nuestros ingresos...
Because our income has been affected?
Y siento que hemos sido afectados tanto drivers como pasajeros.
And I think we have been affected as drivers and passengers?
Y siento que estamos cumpliendo con todas las reglas de Los Ángeles.
And I believe that we comply with all the rules of Los Angeles?
Somos drivers capacitados para entrar al aeropuerto y transportar personas.
And we are drivers well-trained to transport people inside the airport?
Incapacitadas mayores.
Well-trained and with legal age?
Personas que necesiten nuestro servicio.
People that we need our services?
Y poder ayudar a que todo ese tráfico también sea más rápido tanto para pasajeros como para nosotros los taxis.
And be able to help in the traffic so that it can be easy for passenger and for us as well?
Y siento que somos buena flota, buena cantidad de drivers para ayudar...
And I believe that we are a great group of people, of drivers?
Para solucionar ese problema en el aeropuerto.
To help resolve this problem at the airport?
Pedimos la ayuda en nombre de todas las flotas de taxis.
We ask for your help in the name of all the group of the taxi drivers?
Y gracias por su ayuda.
And thank you for your help.
Thank you. Come on up, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, honorable city council. My name is Ara, and I am 20 years LA Yellow Cab owner-operator. So I want to bring your attention that I and my fellow colleagues, about 3,000 drivers, having tough time, that because right before the busiest time, we were kicked out from the curb side to the unregulated, uneven, unfair place where we have to survive. The holidays for us were crushed because our families were unhappy, because we cannot bring enough food to our tables and spend enough on gifts. We went behind our rents, increased credit cards debts, and barely paying our duties. And please note, before the change, we had a viable job and opportunity to put everyday bread on our table. Now we are like old household stuff, put out of house, in case if somebody need to that. And please, everybody stand, whoever supports LA taxi industry. Show yourself.
Thank you, sir. What, hold on for just a second, Mr. Wise. Let me call a couple of more speakers. Jach Dylan, are you here? Rock Dylan? Leon Slomovic? Leon Slomovic, are you here?
Okay, do you have an Andre Casparian on your list? Because I signed up for him.
Sir, go ahead, your time.
Okay, I'm here, council has a matter on calendar for Friday to basically approve a $5.6 million, quote, appropriation, which is really a loan from the contingent reserve phone. It's for 3210, 3248 West Riverside, it's in Griffith Park. It's Mr. Ru's request. I'm here to oppose that request and to make public comment on the following grounds in opposition. One, the monies for Wreckin' Park operations only come from Wreckin' Park fund or general appropriation. There's been no general appropriation for the construction or the operation of this facility. Two, operations, the operational person has not been identified, nor has the method or mode of the operation. Mr. Ru never asked why the cost overruns have gone from 5.6 to 6.5 to 7.1. Mr. O'Farrell never asked, Mr. Kirkorian never asked. If you want to set a precedent for having bridge shelter facilities in parks, then go ahead and approve this. Mr. Bonin had it right when he said, "Not a good idea to piecemeal this entire process."
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Mr. Dylan, good morning.
Good morning, council. My name is Raj Dylan. I'm here representing Breathe California of Los Angeles County. We're a nonprofit organization focused on issues regarding air quality and lung health. We're proud to be headquartered in council member Ru's district. And on December 5th, 2019, the city council's Health, Education, Neighborhood, Parks, Arts, and River Committee moved forward an ordinance ending the sale of flavored tobacco in the city of Los Angeles. And I'm here today to urge you, the city council, to support ending the sale of flavored tobacco in this city, but to make sure that the ordinance includes menthol, any menthol products. Any exemption would weaken the ordinance, and we want to make sure that these products stay out of kids' hands and their lungs. We at Breathe LA do a lot of educational programming, so we've seen the firsthand effect that flavored tobacco has on our communities. And the tobacco industry continues to push these flavored products, and I think it's up to us as a city to stand up to big tobacco so that we can protect the health of our residents, put our residents first. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Leon Slomovic. I represent Taxi Work Association of Los Angeles. I'm a taxi driver and a board member in an independent taxi company. As you have heard, this industry is on the brink of collapse. We have lost, according to LA DOT data, 70% of our work in the city, and now 70% of our work at LAX. This is never about traffic. We only comprise maybe 3.5%, 4% of the traffic. And the taxi companies have submitted detailed plans about how to mitigate it if we're back outside the airport, and have promised to work with LALA to mitigate any additional issues that may come up. We're the only ones that provide ADA-compliant transportation, which the limousines, which are classified exactly as Uber and Lyft, don't provide. This is an issue of service for residents and travelers in Los Angeles.
Thank you, sir. Let me call a couple of more names. Ma'am, I haven't called your name yet. What is your name? No, I haven't called you yet. Next speaker is Andre Karipian? Followed by Sean McMorris? Sean, are you here? Is there another person here by the name of Anari Europian? Or is the same person? Okay. Go ahead, Andre.
Thank you. As a member of the community of Los Feliz for 40 years, I opposed the planned location for the homeless shelter on Riverside Drive in Griffith Park. The location is directly across from a school, nursery, a children's playground, tennis courts, soccer field, and a public park. We're concerned about the kids' safety. We asked Councilman Ru, does this seem like the best location for a homeless shelter? Since Councilman Ru's office did not, I personally asked this very same question to over 200 of the closest neighbors, and I overwhelmingly received the same answer, no. How do you not notify the closest stakeholders in the area about the construction of a homeless shelter 100 feet away from my doorstep? To this, over 50 residents on just my small street said, "Well, we're supposed to get in the Los Feliz ledger." The Los Feliz ledger does not come to our street. Is this negligence, or is this what I clearly see as a deceptive pattern and move by Councilman Ru's office to ignore what the neighbors have to say, to the point that you don't even bring it to the attention of your planning commission for debate? Ru told his fellow councilmen here that the city was on board. This is false. This is not a bed, this is not a bed count game.
Thank you very much, your time is up. Thank you very much. Next speaker? And can I please ask members of the audience not to interrupt this meeting? Thank you, we're trying to get through all the speakers. Mr. McMorris?
Yes, good evening. I'm with California Common Cause. Just want to welcome the new Ethics Commissioner, and I encourage the city council to please adequately fund the Ethics Commission and Department. Your good campaign finance laws are only as good as the people who are able to enforce them. I also want to encourage all of the incumbent candidates right now to fill out our Democracy LA 2020 pledge. It's going live today to our 10,000-plus members in Los Angeles. It'll allow you an opportunity to say where you stand on issues like campaign finance reform and redistricting. And it will go out to all of our members in LA. You've all received emails, and I want to thank Councilman Ru for filling it out. You've all received emails and I wanna thank Councilman Rue for filling it out already. There are over 10 candidates who've already filled it out, so thank you.
Next group of speakers is Liam Thomas. Liam? Gisela Friedman? Stephanie Hernandez? And Robert Agirian? Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, good morning, my name is Liam Thomas. I'm a representative for City Cap driver. I've been driving for the last three years, but lately we're in a bad situation. This is the only income I have. I'm supporting a family, I have a mother, sister, brother, they depended on me. So I'm in a bad situation, I cannot go to the airport. Every time I go to the airport, the customer, they get mad, why we not gonna, why we take a taxi? The last almost more than six weeks, I did not go to the airport. If I don't go to the airport, I'm gonna make money. This is the only income I have. I mean, I'm a little bit this much to be a homeless, we already have enough homeless. I see them, I see myself. This is the only thing I can do. I'm a female driving a taxi.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam President and council members. My name is Gisela Friedman. I'm here representing Parents Against Vaping E-cigarettes or PAVE, a nationwide grassroots organization. I urge you to please introduce and pass a comprehensive ordinance that ends the sale of flavored tobacco, including menthol with no exceptions like hookah. The tobacco industry targets menthol advertising at young people. Of young people 12 and 17 years old who smoke, about 57% smoke menthols. This is a direct outcome of their aggressive marketing. The tobacco industry already had been targeting the African-American community since the 1950s. As a result, 45,000 African-Americans die of tobacco-related disease every year. As a mother of a 17 and a 19-year-old, I'd like to mention the two main concerns I have, flavored hooks kids.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next speaker.
Good morning, my name is Stephanie Hernandez. I'm a parent with L.A. families fighting flavored tobacco. And I'm here today urging you to end the sale of menthol tobacco products. There has been a great deal of discussion about the unintended consequences of a ban on menthol. However, the intended consequences are clear. Decades of a specific urban marketing strategy, excuse me, strategy has led to 85% of African-American smokers using menthols. Today, African-Americans suffer the greatest burden of tobacco-related mortality of any racial or ethnic group in the United States. This was no accident. It was the tobacco's industry's intentions. Now that we know this, it is not okay to allow tobacco industry to get to target a community. As a parent, as an oldest sibling of four, and also as a community organizer, I urge you to end the sale of menthol flavored tobacco that are harming our communities. Thank you.
Next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam President, members of city council. My name is Robert Agirian. I'm a professional cab driver, just like all these cab drivers here. They're all professionals. And I'm gonna speak from my heart. You know, I can only tell you this, that I have been servicing my city, this is my city, you are my family. I'm talking to a family now as a family member, Paul Corretti, Runington, West Hollywood, Union Station. Good to see you, man. Listen, this is what's happening. We are professionals, we still handle and help the blind, the handicapped, the needy, the poor. Customers who don't have credit cards but they have cash. And when we're out of the LAX, servicing the LAX terminals, how are we gonna service these people? We need your help, we're not suffering, we are dying! Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Calling in the next group of speakers, have I called your name, sir? Can you, can you take a seat until I call your name? Ian Jamison? Ian? Sed Raymond? Initials Y, WY, is there anybody here with that initial, WY? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Ian Jamison. Two things, one, two council members, Joe Buscayino and Monica Rodriguez endorse Catherine Barker for reelection to the Board of Supervisors. The others are two Democrats endorsing an anti-immigrant fascist for reelection to the board. Yes, most certainly she is, she voted against two ordinances for immigrant protection, Ms. Rodriguez. Two council members, David Rue and Paul Corretts voted to endorse Jackie Lacy for reelection as District Attorney of the county. Jackie Lacy is hated by Black Lives Matter, she is hated by every progressive organization in this county, she has not prosecuted one killer cop since she came to office. David Rue and Paul Corretts, what the hell were you thinking? You both need to be voted out of office. Thank you so much, vote for Ara Vasquez for District 10.
Okay, we wanna come on forward, hold on for just a second. If you're exiting our council chambers, can you please do it as quietly as possible? We have to continue the business of the council, we've got another speaker that wants to also speak. I'm sorry, sir, I just wanna make sure everyone can hear you, so I'm gonna allow everyone to exit quietly, please. Sergeants, can you please clear the middle row? Go ahead, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, respected council member and personals. This is Said Rahman and I worked for the City Cap, I'm working for 13 years. And all I'm asking to fairly treat the taxi drivers. We lost our car side pickup at LAX and we cannot survive without that. And it's very shameful, LAX is the largest airport in the world and they have no car side taxi pickup. And tons of people that comes right here and they're telling us right now they're gonna relook, they're gonna take flights from Burbank Airport, Ontario, Long Beach, instead of going to LAX. And think about that, we are losing customers also and also we losing our money, we don't make enough money to survive. Taxi company is dying, so please look into it. We cannot survive without LAX, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here with the initials WY? Anyone here with those initials? Mionen, is there someone here with the name of Mionen you wanna come on up? Red Chief, are you in the room? Sir Mionen, go ahead, sir.
Good morning, President Martinez and respected council people. I'm here to present the petition from the drivers of Los Angeles.
Go ahead and hand it over to the sergeant. He'll make sure we get that, thank you.
I just wanna tell you one thing that happened today, this morning to myself. I haven't seen my son for the last three days. The only thing I do is I kiss him in the morning, I go and when I come back, he's still asleep. Because I work so many times and I spend most of the time in the cap. Because since we moved out of the airport, we used to make good money, I mean, we used to support our family. But now we are on the verge of going homeless. We urge you to do something about it. Please. That's all I can say, I don't want to.
Sir. Mr. Hunt?
Good morning, Red Chief Hunt. I do support jobs and I do support the Yellow Cap system. It's so important that we create or keep these jobs for these people. I was once on that line and things like that, so I know how I feel to lose a job. I mean, that's create more homeless and more problems for the city and things like that. This is nothing but big, big money. Madam Chair, thank you, you look like the Red Chief Hunt, Ms. Red Chief Hunt, thank you, you look very nice. Anyways, I wanna set up a meeting about this meeting regarding the way the meetings are being ran here in city council. I think you guys should start listening and I think that, you know, me and Ms. Martinez could make a deal and get it back to the way it's supposed to be, where you guys are showing the people. It looks like you guys are very narcissistic, you guys show yourself, but you guys don't show the audience, the Red Chief Hunt.
Thank you, that concludes, I did call another speaker with the initials YW, I don't think anybody came up to speak. So I'm gonna go ahead and close general public comment. Mr. Sadio, did you wanna speak? Saw that you are on the queue to speak, sir, did you?
Yes. Madam Chair, let me acknowledge that this is not an agenda item and so I don't want to go beyond what's an appropriate comment. But without being redundant, obviously we all support jobs, we support good paying jobs, we support immigrant jobs. This is a logical conclusion to what we had anticipated. We can't turn the clock back, but we can look forward. And then let me suggest that this council consider either an appropriate committee.
Hold on for just a second, we've got Mr. Armando Herman disrupting our council, I can hear the yelling from here on the hallway. Continue, Mr. Sadio.
That it might be appropriate to form either some subcommittee, task force, put it under appropriate jurisdiction so that we could evaluate how we bring some equity with respect to a group workforce that has played by the rules. The rules have changed and now we need to figure out how we don't disadvantage a significant part of our population so that there's not a adverse impact on our economy and on the significant sector.
Let me just suggest we can add that to an upcoming agenda.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes general public comment, Madam Clerk, what's next?
There is a request from a member to send items three and four forthwith today.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order.
And then council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, can we all rise for adjourned motions? Are there any adjournment, adjourned motions to my right? Any adjourned motions to my left? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned, have a great day.